June 14th, 2022 of the Pinehurst Villages Council. We have just a couple items on the work session tonight. And the main discussion will be about text amendments to our village code, municipal code. When we get to future items, I have a couple of things to say there, and we'll move on to that momentarily. All right. We'll call on Mr. Sandborn to begin this discussion. And again, we have considerable data from the staff. Be working from that. Jeff?
Okay. Thank you, John. And this is your first opportunity to look at some actual detailed recommendations regarding what to do to achieve our community's aspirations regarding regulation of short-term rentals and their impacts on our single-family and other residential neighborhoods. And to kind of put this in context, if you all recall, there's, we recognized a while ago that there are kind of layers to this, there are phases that help us kind of think through this process. And the first was, there's a bin of things that we could consider, or you could consider implementing with regard to municipal code that more or less apply to all residential properties, that address some of the symptoms of short-term rentals, and that's what we're going to talk about tonight. It's kind of the lowest-hanging fruit, the easiest thing to consider. And then, you know, beyond that, you know, once we can kind of get to some resolution on this, then we can have a conversation about development ordinance-related text amendments that also might more or less pertain to all residential properties, but help to address some of the symptoms. And then, the third layer, the hardest thing to do is what to do, the things that we would do that are specifically tailored to regulating short-term rentals. So going back to, this is phase one, this is the municipal code, and we try to, you know, I tried to use a title that really achieved the aspiration that we're trying to achieve here. This is, this is about enhancing the quality of life in our residential neighborhoods, recognizing the fact that we have these perceived impacts out there with the short-term rentals. So I'm going to go ahead and open this document up, and we'll kind of step through this. I can almost see that up there. Can I, there we go. Yep. Thank you, Kelly. All right. And so, there are several things that fell into this category of municipal code-type enforceable actions. The first was parking, and this, you know, what we focused on was the on-street parking, where you have all this spillover, when you have, you know, high occupancy in some of the short-term rental properties or other residential properties that have an impact on this running neighborhood. And we focused on the overnight parking situation because we recognize that not unlike our other residential, long-term residential situations out there, short-term rental properties might also have a viable gathering. Maybe they're there for a social or something, but if they're breaking up overnight and they're going home to their other, you know, they're sleeping someplace else, that's one thing, but if they're, if they're packing 40 people into a house, that's quite another. And likewise, our, you know, our long-term residents might have a graduation party for a kid, or we have political gatherings every once in a while, campaign gatherings that, you know, where it's all viable things that go in our, on our community that create these concentrations of vehicles in certain parts of residential neighborhoods, and it's always been thought of as being acceptable. So what we try to do is focus on the overnight parking solution, and maybe I should back up and clarify that when reading this document, I deviated from the standard practice of lining through things that are, would be deleted from the current text in our municipal code and underlining new stuff, because there are things that are hyperlinked in the municipal code that have an underline under it, so it creates confusion. So instead of doing the underline convention, everything that we're proposing to insert is called out in red font. So here's, here's that first item reference, overnight parking in residential streets. You know, there's some, there's some call-out here about the other parking regulatory frameworks that we have to incorporate into this, this solution, that's governed by the paragraph 72 dot 01, 02, 03, that are, that I included for reference above here as well, so you'd know what they are. And then, so this says that, you know, what we're trying to say here is that we don't want parking in, on the street or in the right-of-ways of our residential neighborhoods between the hours of 11:00 P.M. and 7:00 A.M. Is that the, I mean, there's certainly room for discussion here about what's the right time, start-and-stop time, you know, we had some discussion about that among the staff. At 7:00 A.M., we allow a lot of other activities, like construction activities and things like that, so that seemed like a reasonable place to start this as well. 11:00 P.M., we kind of went back and forth with, you know, it was maybe 10, maybe 10 o'clock, maybe midnight, you know, what about a Super Bowl party, or you know, there's other things. So I don't know if 11:00 P.M. is the right answer, and I think that from a staff perspective, we could, we could, we could make an argument for going earlier or later on how you all see that.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I think 11:00 is reasonable, and I think most people are.
One of the things I think we need to-
I'm trying to be asleep by then.
It's way past Pinehurst midnight, but anyway, for most of the, but I think the important thing here on time of day is it's, it should be consistent or relatively consistent through the municipal code, whatever the situation may be.
Yeah.
And as I read this, I think you've achieved that there. I think that the hours are pretty consistent, whether it's nuisances or parking or these sort of things.
I'd have to go back and look at, you know, like for some of our noise-related activities, ordinances, I think there might be a little bit earlier cutoff, like 10:00.
I think it's 10:00.
You think it's 10 now?
On weekends and weekdays, but.
Right.
So it's not a perfect alignment, but we're trying to achieve roughly the same paradigm, if you will.
For my purpose and maybe others, the precise penalty, what is the penalty, other than, what does 72.99 say? I figured it's there.
What does it say?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Ah, okay, there it is.
With the fine amounts and all.
99.
Yeah. There we go.
Jeff, I have a question. This topic came up two weeks, four weeks, six, I'm not sure. And I, we were talking about on-street parking, and I asked if any emergency vehicles, if we had a record of emergency vehicles not being able to get through because of on-street parking at night. And everybody acknowledged that was a valid question. I don't know if I got an answer, but we've seen lots of pictures that people have sent in of cars clogging the streets during the day. I don't recall seeing a problem of on-street parking at night.
Yeah.
And also, I guess part B of that is someone told me that there are situations, and it might be over in Night Gun Club, what do we call it now, Village Acres, where people have to park on the street. So I'm, you know, I guess I'm saying, my first concern was can emergency vehicles get through if there's on-street parking that's clogging, and I don't know the answer to that, but I don't recall seeing anywhere in our record that on-street parking at night presents a problem. And then I think there might be situations where people don't have a choice, they have to park on the street, so.
So I think that, I think you're right. I don't think that we've necessarily seen that evidence, but I would, my assumption would be that we just haven't seen the evidence because people aren't taking pictures at night, but.
But then what about the situation in some of our neighborhoods? And I haven't seen it, but I have been told there are people that have to park on the street at night for, I don't know why.
So if that is the case, then there's, I mean, we have a framework within our municipal code that we have these schedules-
Yeah.
-where we can approve on-street parking in designated spots. So if those situations exist, there's a framework to deal with them. I'm not aware of any, but.
And how, okay.
Well, there's maybe two parts to that good question, and that is, is, are there places where it's a regular daily event, somebody needs to park in the street overnight, or is it a situation where once in a while or-
Have a large gathering, or families in town, or-
But we have a framework to look at that, okay.
Somewhere that they don't have enough parking on-site. Sometimes you'll have stacked parking in a driveway. One person won't want to get up in the morning and move out, so the other person parks in the right-way. So there's, there could be all kinds of reasons that we haven't been shared with why the requirement. You could have just too many cars, so we don't know, we don't know all those reasons. I think a lot of the reasons why we were looking at this parking is it became a quality-of-life issue that we started to hear during this process that was not just, not just associated with short-term rentals. We see it as something that was, so, yeah, there's, there is some of that, but it's also associated with other, other properties within the village. And one of the objectives, if you, if you recall that, there was an understanding that we were going to develop rules that were not only going to apply specifically to short-term rentals, but to everybody in general. So I think this is one of those things.
Yeah, and I just, I just haven't seen, I haven't seen enough that I'm convinced that parking on the street at night is a problem. And maybe, maybe I've just, maybe I've just, I don't know, maybe not, I just, I haven't seen.
A little bit off what Lydia said. I live in the village. I've seen it, but it's rare. But I think the adoption of what you're suggesting there will both serve as a bit of a deterrent, perhaps, as well as, I think, reassure residents that, okay, there's some rules to play by.
Right. We don't, fortunately, we don't see a lot of violations of anything, any of our ordinances, and that's a good thing, but it doesn't mean that we want to accept it when it happens.
Do we have to put up signs to tell people no on-street, how do we, how do we enforce this?
So that is a question we have to still fully answer. At a minimum, we would have to do it, treat it like we do our speed limits. Where at the entrance to all of our residential neighborhood, there's a sign that says, no parking on-street or on the side of the street.
And I think we-
Eight hours of-
I think we asked this question, like I said, two, three, four, however many weeks ago that we discussed it, we did talk about how do we enforce this, I mean, and I think at the time we said signs.
How do you, how do you enforce it?
No, well, how do you, well, first you've got to, you can't hold anybody responsible for violation of the law unless you advise them of what the law is, so somewhere we've got to have signs.
Too much-
Which is what you just said.
That's the point of what I just said. At a minimum, we would have to have signs at the entrances to all of our neighborhoods and all the streets that enter our neighborhood that say, just the same way we do a speed limit. You know, I don't know necessarily that how the law comes down on that question, but common sense would say that if, if that solution works for a speed limit, it would probably also work for parking.
I agree.
And I would also guess that in some instances, if there is a car parked in violation of the code, perhaps that's the first time, and the officer just provides a warning, or, you know, I mean, the idea is not to play gotcha, the idea is to get people to just cooperate with what the rules are, and so I think you're on the right track.
I think that's very reasonable, and I think it's easy to enforce in the sense that you're not going to have too many cars in the streets. When you see one, you identify it and take it home, or whatever the case may be. I do like the infrastructure, the aspect that you can identify these one-offs, because there's going to be a little bit of a ripple effect that's going to come out, and to be able to address those and make sure that we're being fair with our citizens who have a bona fide reason as to why they're on the street or whatever it is, and we can do that. Other part of that that just goes through my head is that what happens when you end up having your, you know, graduation party and Grandma and Grandpa and, you know, Aunt Jenny and everything, when they're staying overnight, and you've got a few extra cars? Is there a way for them to get, you know, authorization for the day and night, or two nights, or whatever it is that they have there?
I think we could, you know, there are some one-off things, like we could treat it with the same way we do, we do right now for temporary authorization for an oversized vehicle, or-
Just common sense type of stuff, people approach it that way, and I think that's totally reasonable.
Jane, do you have a question on 72.5?
Yep. Looking, looking at the parking, new parking provisions, there seem to be three separate sets of circumstances. 72.05, I guess, is overnight parking of passenger cars in the residential zones, is that, is that right?
Overnight parking of any-
Or is it any old car?
Anything, any vehicle, yeah.
Does it include the big vehicles as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so it includes the big vehicles as well. And then 72.07 has got two, sort of two subsets. One is a commercial or oversized vehicle shouldn't be parked in the residential area during the day even, at any time. And second of all-
What are you referencing here?
Sorry?
Where are you referencing in the document?
Where, what letter in 72.0?
B.
P.
Commercial and/or storage prohibited. So, "Commercial vehicles, oversized vehicles and trailers shall not be parked or stored in any residentially-zoned districts or in any right-of-way adjacent thereto unless they're within a totally enclosed structure." Okay, end of, end of sentence. Then, "No vehicles shall be parked or stored for a fee." So that's an unauthorized fee lot, which seems to be a different circumstance from the residential area that doesn't have anything to do with a fee lot. So there's, there's the residential, and then there's the fee lot.
Right.
And then as you, as you drop down through C, administration enforcement, and D, penalty, the penalties for these three things, the first one being 72.05, and the second being the oversized vehicle in a residential zone, and the third being the fee lot situation, there are three different kinds of penalties, unless I'm reading it wrong, but I, I tried real hard. So for 72.05 overnight parking in a residential zone, there's a $50 penalty, but, fee, but you can also be towed.
Could be towed, yes.
Could be towed.
Yeah.
For 72.07, "Commercial and oversized vehicles parked in a residential zone at any time," there's only the $50 fine. There's no towing or cease and desist involved. But for the unauthorized fee lot, there, you have the new tiered fines, but also the final sentence of the penalty section that talks about a $500 fine right out of the gate, as well as a cease and desist can be issued. So my first question is, should, should the penalties be made similar for all these different circumstances? Should we somehow realign the penalty situation a little bit? And my second question about parking is, in 7299, which is the penalty section B, about 60% of the way down the paragraph, it says, "For penalty purposes, each violation recorded and subsequently abated on any distinct law enforcement officer visit shall constitute a separate offense." And I'm not sure what that means. Does that mean you have to drive the car away and bring it back again?
Yes.
But what if you just left the car there, stubborn as, as an old dog, and you didn't move it at all? Shouldn't there be a penalty every day?
That's where the towing comes in.
The idea here is that we're addressing a relatively short-term problem anyway. This is part of the, it's also part of why the fee structures are different, but short-term rentals are short-term.
But this is, this applies to everybody.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that, that particular enforcement action is... Which one are you referring to again?
Well, this was my question.
You've got me tied in a knot here, Jane.
I mean, I had to make a chart for myself, and for a while, for a while, I knew what I was talking about, and then, and then it got away from me. But I, I think we need to look at the penalties and see whether maybe they should either all be the same as each other, or at least made a little, a little clearer, because it was very confusing to me. And, and then the subsequently abated thing, I, I don't understand really how that works.
How does that feel?
I'm, I'm agreement about the, if we can make them consistent penalty-wise. I haven't noticed what Jane's referring to, but now that she said it, if there are distinctions, maybe we should be consistent, so we're staying on message with citizens. On the subsequently abated, each violation subsequently abated, I took that to mean that just that, I don't know if you need the phrase subsequently abated, but I took that to mean that every time you record something, it's a separate offense. I mean, even if it's, if you record something, and then it's settled, and then next week it repeats itself, it's, that's a new offense. That's what I took that phrase to mean. I don't know what you thought.
Yeah. Jane, I'm going to apologize. You posed these exact same questions to me on email, and I gave you an answer. I don't have it with me here, so I-
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I-
Guess I didn't answer your questions adequately, but.
Okay. I couldn't figure it out, and I also couldn't figure out how the last sentence, "However, violations of the prohibition of commercial parking or storage of vehicles for a fee shall be punishable by a fine of $500 per violation," so it's $500 right out of the box.
Right.
"And with each day the violation exists, constituting a separate and distinct offense." How does that fit in with the red writing, which is a tiered?
Right. I think that, that, that particular distinction has always been in the ordinance, and the idea is that if you're running a, an authorized four-fee parking lot, that, that's a more grievous offense than you just happen to have an oversized vehicle parked on your property-
Right.
Because you were moving in and you didn't get approval, or-
Right, but the red writing applies to a fee lot as well. So if you've got a fee lot going, are you, are you going to be subject to the red writing, or are you going to be subject to the last sentence?
Last sentence. "However, violations of the prohibition of commercial parking for storage of vehicles for a fee shall be punished by a fine of $500 per violation." Calls it out as a special case.
A use. That really comes in, you're establishing a use, that's not allowed.
Yeah, I don't understand what the under-contract part means.
That's, that's the same, it's the same framework we used in our noise ordinance update after the party incident downtown.
Right, but-
But that's, that's the way to try to get this back to the property owner versus the vendor.
Right. Right. To keep that linked in, the property owner.
That's, that, that, that framework that's in red is almost, not exactly, but it's almost identical to the one that was adopted on the noise ordinance side.
Is there a problem, Jane, with the consistency you mean still, or is it-
Consistency and-
Of the fines, or of the infr-
And clarity, and it just seemed, sorry? Could I do what?
Rewrite it to what you think is clear.
Yeah, I, I could rewrite it. I, I made some suggestions, you know.
Well, Jeff referenced the email exchange you had, and I thought, I tried to find it because I thought I was on the thread, but maybe that's the answer within there.
Because I, I think that the, the approach of the ordinance of going after these kinds of things is, is a very good thing for us to have in our municipal code, and very helpful, and having it be across the board for everybody is, is a great idea. And I do think we have, as Pat pointed out, the flexibility where there might be a situation that we want to have as an exception, we can do that if we need to, and so I think this is, this is great.
Maybe we should just sit down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this is good to go.
I'll try to pasture this, okay.
I think that's right.
Declared nuisances, this is all existing language, just there for context. This is the old, this is the noise ordinance language to include what was modified last
I'd like to talk about this.
The, you know, some of the research that we've done about how different local governments deal with this, some of the problems associated with short-term rentals, Darren was able to find several examples of this kind of party house context, where you try to focus in on the multiple offense type of a situation that really is, that creates a lot of ire in the, in the community, like, you know, kind of like what we saw downtown last fall. Was that last fall? Time's flying.
No longer ago than that.
Short question, is the phrase "party houses" what's used in other citizens, in other communities, or did you come up with that?
No, I didn't come up with that. It's usually, a lot of times it's "party houses" or "unruly gatherings."
I'd like, I'd like to propose some changes that, to me, make it seem a whole lot simpler. Can I propose some for all of you to hear? I would change the title to "unruly gatherings," and I think this should apply to every home in Pinehurst, not just these, not just party houses.
It does exist right now.
But, but you've got "large and unruly gatherings," I'd say just "unruly gatherings." It could be, the first one I'd just change it, take, A, take out "large" and, and just put "unruly gatherings," that residential properties are prohibited, period. "For the purpose of regulating this prohibited activity, follow will constitute an unruly gathering." I'd take "large," you could have an unruly gathering of four people, five people, six people. And when I got to 10, and I, when, first time I read it, I thought, how in the world are we going to count 10 people every time that some, one of these happens? But I thought, wait a minute, it should apply no matter how many people are in that house. And then, and the second, so I would take out A1, 10 or more people simultaneously present, and then I say, "Three or more validated offenses among..." I would, I think you get into trouble when you enumerate certain things, because you might exclude something, and to me, if the police had to go over to a house three times within 24 hours and found violations of ordinances or whatever, any violations, I don't think, I don't know if we get, I think, I think we'd make it too narrow if we limited by listing these. If we could just say, "The people, if the police find any three violations of, fill-in-the-blank what, that's an unruly gathering."
But we've got the kitchen sink clause at the end.
I'm sorry, Jane, what was that?
Well, you've got any felony offense charges, is that the one you're talking about?
Well...
But you could have, you could have noise, you could have serving alcohol. It just seemed like if we could do generalized language to describe the types of activities that would be problematic without having to specify each one because, you know, it seems if we're this specific and we leave one thing out and that's the one that they're committing, then you've lost the opportunity. That's not one of the three.
Yeah. I think that's a good observation. I, we, from a staff perspective, we took it, our perspective was we wanted to be as specific as possible because we wanted to be able to defend ourselves in court.
Right.
But I understand what you're saying. I don't know if there's a way to craft that because this is a mixture of municipal court violations and violations of state law and federal law and...
Well, and you know, you know that better than I do, but I feel strongly about calling unruly gatherings. I feel strongly about saying 10 or more.
I agree.
It could be three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And then however we describe the conduct, if you want it, if you want to describe it specifically but also have a catch-all, just if there's something, if they don't violate one of these specifically, then you've got a catch-all that brings in the others. And I'm troubled about the 100 yards because I think, I'm not sure you can hold the owner of a property responsible for the conduct of somebody who does something 100 yards away from the home. Let's say, let's say for example, you've got the owner of the property and he's got a contractual arrangement through a short-term rental agreement or whatever, that's his contractual arrangement. But if somebody else comes down from Raleigh to see these people and he goes up to the village and he gets drunk and he's on the street, I don't know if the owner of the property can be held responsible.
Has to be somebody that was on that property.
Well, this says, "three or more validated offenses committed within 100 yards of the subject property."
Says...
But then it says, "by persons present at the property." So the 100 yards...
By persons present at the subject property. It has to be committed by a person that was present at the property during that 24-hour period.
Right.
So what's the 100 yards?
So the idea here is sometimes you have, a product of unruly gatherings is that unruly activity spills out into the street. It's still unacceptable. We want to capture that, the opportunity to...
Or they go over to the neighbor's house.
Or go to the neighbor's house and assault somebody or, yeah.
I agree with Lydia, the first two points you made, Lydia, about the large and the 10 or more. Matter of fact, in number two there, I think you probably want to drop off which the 10 or more people were present.
Oh, I was going to take that one out altogether because it can be an unruly gathering with three people, less than 10 people plus. You know, the first time I read it, I thought, how do you establish there are 10 people there? The police come over and one steps outside.
I agree with you on that. I'm just...
I agree also.
I think Jeff and Darren made the point that we don't have to have the 10 people. It could, right? You guys said, yeah, that's an issue.
Yeah.
If you scroll down a little more...
Part of what we were trying to achieve there was a threshold that tried to entice our short-term rental owners not to advertise their places for high occupancy.
I didn't catch that, but...
But your point's well taken. You'd have to have a police officer that could actually count heads and then attest that there are more than 10 people present at some point.
No more than nine people stay in this house. What do you do?
Well, and you know, it's going to come down to, at some point, people have got to call the police. You know, we had somebody complain, come in and talk about the next door, next door to the party house and he smelled pot. He told me two months before that he smelled pot. I said, well, did you call the police? No.
Right.
They got to call the police.
Yeah, we can't enforce any of this until the police get involved.
Well, I sent my little comments around last week and they're remarkably, remarkably similar to yours. I would change party houses to unruly gatherings. Section A, I would drop out "large" and and just say "unruly gatherings." I would eliminate item one altogether for the exact reasons Lydia said. I mean, are we going to be trying to chase down 10 people who, some of whom probably didn't do anything wrong and keep track of them? And what are we going to do with them when we've got them? Are we going to keep them here? You know, how do you know if they've been there for 24 hours or not? Have they had, if there were 10 people, do they have to be the same 10 people for the whole time? You know, it's too complicated.
What if it was one person?
And if you read the ordinance and what it's trying to get at, it's that there have been a series of bad actions and the 10 people really don't have anything to do with it. So I would take out number one altogether and the rest of it looks fine.
I think...
Ask me.
I think this'll, one, serve as a deterrent, okay, for some people. And, two, I think our residents will find it a little bit empowering when they see it in writing and then they become sort of the local neighborhood watch, informal neighborhood watch folk. So they, now they know, wow, the village has said this, I'll call the police.
And understanding some of the, some of our citizens have been frustrated that they were the neighborhood watch and have called, but it is a requirement, not a requirement, but if we want stuff enforced, we need to use our police.
Yeah.
Okay? And if someone is, whether they're a short-term rental or a homeowner and they're beside me and they're disorderly and unruly, my responsibility is to call the police if I want it to change.
But that's what I'm seeing as a neighbor would need to do.
You understand.
Yeah.
And I like the theme of what's being put out here and I want to make sure that we're able to control the unruly parties and give some teeth into what's going on here.
There's another side of this gathering, large versus just, occasionally you'll see things pop up in our police reports where you have a domestic. If you actually count off the number of offenses that were charged, you're going to get over that threshold. But it was a domestic thing and quite often it involves our residents that really don't have the means to pay the fines that are described here. That what we want to sign, is that what we're trying to create here?
Well, they've got more problems on the fines, don't they?
Yeah, and we're just adding to it, but...
So Jeff, you're saying, so if it's a domestic situation and the police are called three times in a 24-hour period?
I'm saying they might get called once and there's more than three charges.
Okay, for that, we don't want that. I mean, that's not what we're trying to go after.
I don't think that's the intent of what we're trying to get to.
That's the point, it's a ripple effect. So we have to be careful what we're writing here because we don't want it to infringe on other things. And I take your advice and guidance and the guidance of the police as to how best to do that. I'm not an expert in writing municipal code here.
I made that point to say that that might, that might be an additional reason to have a size threshold associated with this. It really is a gathering, it's a large, you know, but...
Well, the other things you've listed on there are illegal anyway, across the board. And so, point taken. All right. I don't know that and I did not think about the ripple effects when it came to domestic issues prior to tonight and you mentioned that. But it goes back to anything that we're doing here, we need to think about those ripple effects and try to mitigate it. And if there's a better way to write this, so we end up doing that, then I'm willing to listen.
Well, we're going after gatherings, unruly gatherings, and I don't see a domestic as being an unruly gathering. I mean, to me, a domestic situation is a couple, a family.
But you'll get a charge for, or two for disorderly conduct or it might be an assault charge as well.
Yeah.
Well, do the police in their discretion realize that they're dealing with a domestic situation and not an unruly gathering?
Well, they would, yeah.
Yeah.
I would think, police can make that on-the-spot judgment. I think that's part of their training, their experience. They're going to look at a situation and analyze it and they probably get a, make a quick determination of what am I facing here and proceed accordingly. That's just my hunch.
Look at unruly gathering as opposed to unruly...
That answer be satisfactory to the neighbors. We want to push the point.
Domestic situations can be very dangerous.
Yeah.
Do the police ever...
Is unruly behavior the better title then for trying to cover all the...
Well, it really is, it really is, it's a gathering.
Unruly residences, unruly...
Remember the intent when we started this was to go against unruly parties, okay, and stop party houses.
Yeah.
Okay. And so we're taking ourselves down a path here.
Right.
That's getting away from it, just talking about unruly people. And again, when you list all the different items in number two there, they're all illegal activities anyway. And so now maybe this one we're doing, let's go back to the original idea here, let's look at it for the size of the party, include that because your point's well taken on there to make sure that it's not skewed into something else. And look at it from a perspective of just things going inappropriately in a house.
Wait, are you, so what are you proposing?
Well, Jeff's point on there was that the people, the amount of people in there helped address it for the party house and kept it from going down to issues like domestic calls and things like that. Your point of how do you count out 10 people, point taken, okay? How else can we, what other mechanisms, I guess, is what I'm asking, is do we keep the focus on a unruly party, which we're trying to stop, that's our goal, versus having this skewed into being something else and you have a tremendous ripple effect? And I don't have that answer.
You can have an unruly party, we have them in Pinehurst, six people. So it may be, maybe calling it unruly party. Domestic situations, is that, is that an exceptional situation or are we seeing it? To me, to me, the unruly gatherings, unruly party, unruly parties, those, that's what we're going after. And I'm just wondering, relative to domestic situations, is it domestic or do we have as many of, do we, are they infrequent or they...
Majority of our assault charges are domestic related.
Right, but it seems like that is, that's an exception to this party rule that the police ought to be qualified, you would think the police ought to be qualified to go in and go, okay, this is not an unruly gathering, this is not an unruly party, this doesn't apply.
There's probably very few parties in Pinehurst that are less than eight or 10 people. You don't really call them a party then, other than maybe a dinner party. So to meet that threshold, I think is probably pretty simple.
There's complaints in Pinehurst about an unruly party of six people frequently.
Okay.
I'm not going...
Learning things we didn't know about Pinehurst.
Jeff Morgan, I'm not sure I understand your point on the number then, Jeff. Jeff Morgan, you think we should have it or not have it on the 10?
I am open to it. My point is I don't know the answer to it and I recognize that and Jeff's point is well taken. And so tonight, I'm not really, I can't write an ordinance for you that states this is how we solve it, but the point's well taken, okay? And we want to keep the focus on party houses, not let this get skewed into something else. That's what I'm saying. So I rely on the expertise of the staff to say, how do we, how do we move forward on this?
To that point, the lower that number is, the easier it is to substantiate. You know what I'm saying? If it was, if it really was a large party and you had 20 people there, it's easy to, it's easy to find, to see, for a police officer to see 10 of them. It's even easier for the police officer to see eight or six. So the point I'm making is maybe 10 is not the right number if we're still trying to, but a number might create the results that we're looking at.
Is there a number in code or police practice or something else that is standard or is referred to or required? There's nothing like that we can base on.
And the number of people really knows what we're getting at. Where we're getting at the...
Behaviors.
Paragraph two, the behaviors, okay?
Behaviors.
I can go back to, I prefer, I think Lydia's original edits there. I think unruly gatherings covers what we're talking about. And it's sort of a little bit like that old expression, you know, you know it when you see it. And whether it's five people or seven people, if it's unruly, and somebody's called up the police and said, there's lots of craziness going on next door to me, the police come out, they're the professionals, they'll address the situation. I mean, that's the way I view it. I think we...
So from a staff and police point of view, having a number doesn't, doesn't matter? Doesn't help? That's what I think we're assuming here.
The police is going to go wherever they're called, right?
Right.
So it doesn't matter if there's one person in there...
And what can be charged under this ordinance and what can't, yeah.
Well, my recommendation here is that we give the staff leeway here on trying to figure out how do we, how do we get there, okay? We know what the intent is. I think that's agreed upon by everybody here. And whether you have 10 people or no people or whatever, it's the behaviors we're trying to address and we're trying to focus on unruly parties, not other stuff.
But let us go back and look and think about it.
One more, one more question.
Yeah.
Do we have enough catch-all language in here? You know, I thought just have one big catch-all general thing, but you've got, you've got your A through I and then J is any felony offense charges. Do you need, are there any other types of offensive behavior other than would be covered here, that should be covered here? Do we need another catch-all? I mean, just a question for you to think about. And my concern again is the police are going to see something that's not covered in this list and...
And, you know, our ordinances can be living, breathing documents. We made the point, the same point when we adopted the noise ordinance, that we would go through a learning process. If a offense needs to be added because based on experience, we can do that.
Yep. I think that having a minimum number of people is going to add a complicating factor that doesn't help us get farther forward, number one. Number two, if it's a domestic and they've done something where they've got, done three of these things, so their spouse or their kids or their grandma, I don't care about them getting a $2,000 fine, serves them right. And so I don't have a problem with that. I think it's, just take out the minimum number of people and we're, and we're good.
Yeah, I think we're all right.
All right.
Okay.
There's the fines associated with that. Those limits...
For the property owner, yeah. This deals with the owner.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you for, thank you for calling attention to that language. So this is where if you have a long-term rental couple that gets involved in a domestic dispute or some other thing, are we going to hold the property owner responsible for that?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's right.
You're talking about a domestic.
Or anything that, I mean, it was just a one-off thing that...
Oh, I see. You're talking in a domestic case, you said, Jeff, is that correct?
Or anything else that generates a few offenses on a, on a bad night for the long-term residents of a long-term rental property.
I think bringing the property owner into these questions has always been an objective of mine because they just want to pay attention.
I think it's been an objective for the short-term rental. It's not necessarily, for the long-term rental, you're renting the home, it's basically, it's your, it's your house.
People will be writing into their leases.
Yes, they will be.
People will be writing into their leases a clause that says, if you do anything on my, in my house that you're running from me, that causes me to be subject to this, you're going to, you're going to have to pay, it's coming out of your cleaning allowance or whatever.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that's, I think that's what actually happened.
That's going to solve itself, that's not a problem.
And I also sort of like the subsequent offense within 24 months of a previous offense. You're basically telling the property owner, okay, you can clean up your act or you can clean up the situation that you're renting. Or you can, you can clean up the situation that you're renting, but know that we'll revisit this again. Yeah, I, I agree, that's what the property owner is going to do.
Okay, so if, if you end up having someone who's renting a house long-term, all right, let's say they've got college freshmen. They had a college freshman.
Okay.
And let's just say that kid gets caught smoking pot in the house. Are we now going to say the property owner, whomever the actual owner of the property is, has to pay $2,000?
Wait, this one talks about the three offenses. You're just talking about smoking pot one time?
Okay, let's say he got caught three times. My, my point is, is that you got long-term rentals here, and it's human beings, okay, that are doing things. And, and to, are we expecting too much from a homeowner to be able to regulate a lot of these different activities that we're looking at?
I mean, I think there, obviously, there's a responsibility that goes with homeownership.
But there's not a responsibility for control somebody else's kid, there's not a responsibility.
No, but it's a responsibility if you're renting your property.
That's right, that's right.
I mean, come on.
You can put a clause in a lease that says, you know, you're going to use this for lawful purposes, and the minute you don't, you're out.
If you don't, if you leave the house in a wreck, they take the deposit from you? I mean, they have a lot of things they put in leases to make sure you're as a lessor as an.
But, but from our laws, we're still going to find them $2,000 for that?
I don't know, maybe that's, I don't know if that's enough or not enough, to be honest with you. Uh, I just, I don't know, it seems like a reasonable, actually, we're finding them $1,000 for the first offense. It's $2,000 for subsequent ones.
Okay, so, so, I don't think the amount is the important part, I think the principle is what we're talking about here.
Right.
And, and what you're saying is that you think it's okay to go ahead and charge the landowner, the property owner, for the discretion of the person who's renting the house, or indiscretions, rather.
I think the property owner will put the appropriate clauses in the contract for their lease, for that property, so that the lessee understands the criteria that they're living under, it's sort of like renting a car.
Okay, we're getting in a slippery slope here, in my opinion, because we started in this to say, hey, how do we regulate activities in short-term rentals? And I got no problem with this stuff, and, and part of it was being able to hold property owners accountable in the sense of you're just having, letting people come in and have crazy parties and stuff like that, I got that. I'm not, I'm not going to push back on that part. Okay, but when we start looking at writing the laws in here that are now going to affect other areas and the ripple effect, starting to get away from that, that's when we have to really look at this with, with a critical eye and saying, is that what we're trying to accomplish? Okay, and I don't think that's what we're trying to accomplish right now.
Jeff Morgan, property owners in violation of 92.17, that's the party house. It's only unruly gatherings, so property owners in violation of the unruly gatherings, they are the ones who are subject to the fines. So if you're, if you own a rental home and there's an unruly gathering, do you have a problem with charging the owner of that home for the unruly, unruly behavior of your tenants three times in a 24-hour period?
And maybe I'm missing this, but what I'm understanding on it, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Darren, is that if you have a long-term rental and you have an unruly party that occurs by the, by the, for the folks that are there, the property owner is still going to get fined.
And the unruly gatherings.
It doesn't have to be a party either, it could just be the, the tenants.
Okay, so the tenants have done illegal activities, and then you're going to have the, the homeowner be fined for that? Okay. I, I'm not sure that's accomplishing what we set out to accomplish, okay? I think we're, we have an overreach here.
There are real estate lawyers that specialize in writing leases. And they, to protect the property owners from unruly tenants, and that is how the world works out there. Apartment complex owners, when you sign a lease now in an apartment complex, you might need to bring your own lawyer with you.
Let us go back and do a legal review on this. Mike's taken a look at this previously, but not with the changes that you all best haven't made here, so. I do have some concerns about whether or not we're crossing a line here on what's reasonable for a property owner to.
Have to be able to pick up.
Yeah, I, I think that, I don't want to have it overreached either, and Jeff's making some good points on that. But also, leases do contain outs for the property owner, it would seem. But I think you should research that, let's see what's better to do.
Okay. And then one of the, one of the underlying offenses was this public urination and defecation. Turns out, we had nothing in our ordinances or otherwise to.
Does anyone have, does anyone have any like thing like this in their ordinances?
I'm sorry?
Does anybody have things like this in their ordinances?
Yeah, actually, this language came directly from somebody else.
Or it came from a college town somewhere.
From where?
These are frequent in college towns, I can tell.
Is this a problem?
Well, we have heard about this, yes.
Sure.
Well, we've heard, number one, I ask, is it a problem, but then, number two, I say, how do, how do we enforce this?
They're caught in the act generally.
But you got, the police have to catch them in the act.
It happens.
Oh, yeah.
And nowadays, people walk around with those phones.
Yeah, already have, that, that, there's, yeah, there are other ways to have evidence, yeah.
I, I'm not wild about this, this is, we're not a large metropolitan area. And I, I know we've heard, had maybe one person say she saw it outside of her window, but I don't think it's that big. Does it happen in our single-family neighborhoods?
Wait, so you're, you're opposed to having this ordinance?
Well, no, I, I only question, number one, is it a problem? Is it a problem? And where does it happen? And how do you enforce it? I mean, if you see it, if the police see it, yeah, they can do something about it. But if you see it and go call the police, the police, police have got to go find the person who allegedly did it, and then it's his word against her, his word.
But I think we're pairing this up.
If it happens, it's a problem.
And we're.
But is it?
For us to have the language in our ordinance to deal with that problem.
That's right, I think it is a good update to the ordinances itself. We ought, we ought to have this, hopefully it doesn't happen very much, if there's a problem or not, I don't know, but if it happens, we have it covered.
And this is also one of the aspects of the party house. So, so if you look at the party house characteristics, you know, in order to have, so we're, we're actually placing a, placing that, that violation in there. So that's one of, one of those things that.
I, I just, I have not heard of this as a problem. And, and Jeff, I understand your, like, how could I think, how could I be opposed to this? I am opposed to it, I'm just not sure, we have heard, I'm not sure our record reflects that this is a problem in this community. And even, and if it happens, how do you enforce it? If the police don't see it, it's unenforceable. You know, I was thinking about, you know, I talked to somebody in Southern Pines, they have public restrooms, we don't have public restrooms. And if, if this is happening, and it's happening downtown, if this goes to the quality of our neighborhoods, how does this? This, I don't think this goes to the quality of our neighborhoods, our single-family neighborhoods.
I will tell you, I got this language directly from Glenn.
From where, Jeff?
Okay.
Glenn Webb.
From Glenn.
Oh, okay.
I'm uncommon.
He's not concerned about enforceability, but.
Right.
Yes, the only thing that I'm curious about is that the final phrase, or private property? So I gather.
Having the permission.
I think. I think it's a good start. We don't want to overreach, but we want to be covered.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I just raised that if you're chatting with someone, but I guess.
And I'm really happy that it's not an issue in our town.
What'd you say?
And I'm really happy it is not an issue in our town, so.
I've been, I'm surprised at how many people I see on golf courses, men do it on golf courses.
Okay.
Okay.
Even at the U.S. Open.
We move on?
Yes.
One of the other things that we have, we have heard about is, is the need for us to have some sort of standards regarding fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors and things that actually are required by state law in any rental property, whether it's short-term or long-term. And so we went back and looked at the general statutes language, and they do, they limit our ability to take enforcement action, but they do give us something to hang our hat on, so. We put this in our, in the, in the minimum housing standard part of our municipal code, thought that was the best place for it to fall. And that's where you have the recommended language for regarding a lack of smoke detectors or the carbon monoxide detectors that would be in compliance with the general statutes requirement.
Okay.
For those devices. And then the penalty language is the maximum penalty that's allowed under state law.
And do we have to give them the 30 days after written notification?
That's in the state law, too.
And is that the same thing with the, with the rubbish provisions in the public works section of our municipal code?
No, I think that's just part of our own abatement framework.
Probably.
Public works session, section, it's.
I think those timelines are all the same, whether it's rubbish or mowing weeds or.
Trash cans.
Trash cans are all the same. That's, was a policy decision that a past council made.
Is it this council or the state?
This council.
Because, because for, if you, if you putting out a stinky old trash can, and it's not on, you know, garbage pickup day and the rest of the neighborhood, and then you take off, you know, and the rest of the neighborhood's left to deal with that situation. You don't want to be giving them a reasonable time to cure, you know what I mean? It's like, get it out of here.
I, I don't disagree, but that is, John, you may, you may have actually.
It's, it's hard, I mean, the notice times we have to, we have to give, right? And, and we just, it's hard to work around it, but.
We don't have a way to instantly abate some of that stuff.
Where, where is this?
Part of the problem was, there was, we, we used to have different abatement timelines for different offenses. Not only was it confusing for the public, but it was also confusing for staff, and it created friction and conflict. So a previous council made a decision to say, make all of that uniform, so it was easier for everybody to understand.
Well, maybe we could, maybe we could fix it, because now we've got a different kind of situation, that, and this doesn't help us.
I'm sorry, Jim, what is your point on, what is in helping?
The, the policy from X years ago says that for these municipal violations across the board, we got to send somebody a written notice and give them a period to cure.
Yeah.
But now, especially with short-term rentals, we're faced with a situation that, that prior board probably didn't have to face, which is a stinky garbage can put out on the wrong day of the week, and then the short-term renter goes back to, you know, corner on the cobbleway.
It just isn't, we're not.
Doesn't worry about it, but, but everybody in the neighborhood is left over, okay, with the stinky garbage can. And why do we have to send a written notice?
That's where the rental manager comes into play.
Right, and, and the written notice is there as a part of the evidence of what's happened.
That's why the.
But if we can get information and know about the property manager, then we have someone to call.
There's also not.
Unless the neighbors are going to tow it back in.
Rip out the notice and a thing by the roots.
There's also not a way for us to instantly abate any of those things. So we have to give you a reason, we have to give you a time to cure. If you don't cure it within that time, for some violations, we can abate that. So as I reported a couple of weeks ago, we, we towed four cars from a property because that was, as part of an abatement procedure that we went through, but we hadn't given a notice.
Certain things that involve, no kidding, health and safety, we don't have to have, allow that cure time. Those things don't qualify.
Right, right, right.
But we do have discretion on how long that cure time is, it just has to be reasonable.
Where, where is that policy?
The uniform thing?
Yeah.
I don't know if it was adapted in policy or if it was just said, we're going to change all our municipal codes to reflect that.
All right, well, this particular one, I think, because of its nature.
Which one?
Is something that needs, it's, it's unwholesome, I mean, people's dogs get into the tra, I mean.
The trash can, we're just dealing with the trash cans.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say.
I think neighbors have to be neighbors, they can.
Trash can problems are not unique to our short-term rentals.
Right.
We've just sent out a notices for somebody who won't move their, won't move their trash cans over on, I think it's Torrey Pine, so we had to send violations out, fines, but that doesn't care.
We are developing a record for that, and if we, if we work into the municipal code, you know, number of violations per property, and we have evidence of that, then we can start doing a little bit more.
You tier it.
Enforcement, I think.
Yes, you can tier it, you can have.
Unfortunately, it takes time, but.
You can have a multiple, a multiple violator policy. So if it's been in a rolling year, you've had more than one or two, you go right to the, you go right to fining, something like that.
Well, I think it's a good start, we have some clarifications to do, good thinking, I think, and helpful notes by the council. So we'll, we take this to the next step, and I think we can get pretty close to executing this.
Try to bring it to you in the, in the next regular meeting.
Bring it to the regular meeting. Let's bring it to the regular meeting.
Yeah.
And, and also, since you're finishing this up, then it's, the PDO updates would be the next step in this, in the SCR review, right? Okay. Any comments from council members to Jeff or Darren on this?
Thank you, this is, this is, thank you.
Feedback, thanks.
Very good.
All right, just finishing, sir?
Yeah, I just had one question on the, the pedestrian safety, where, where was that one?
That was, that was the, that's the justification for immediate abatement of the, on the towing, to get the vehicles out of the right of way.
I, I was going to propose a small change on that, that, that have, just some wording that said some, that the village manager, upon reasonable request of the owner of, of a property, of such a violation, may take. In other words, I wanted to put a, the owner could make a, could make a reasonable request for, or, excuse me, a resident could make a reasonable request of the owner, and if a violation occurs, then the village manager could make a decision.
Yeah, I would think we would treat it like, like we do for oversized vehicles or something, where they make a, an ahead-of-time request, not a after-the-fact.
Well, if you guys can look at that, I'm, I'm not really hung up, it was a scribbling I made about just the idea of the owners making a reasonable request. And then you guys.
Right.
Actually, it sort of services as a little bit of a buffer, too, that, you know, you're having.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm fine.
Let's see if we can finish off the work session agenda then. Future items, we've been talking about the harness track, I think everybody has been reviewing information there. Jeff and I talked a little bit, well, yesterday actually, and then last week about, you are, you are looking at where the, well, how would you like to express it, where the best bang for the buck can be received in additional monies that could be available, either in the current budget or special budget, with respect to a harness track. And you're doing an analysis of what would be the best investments that we could make, best amount of return.
I don't know if it's best investments, I think reasonable investments is what we're looking for.
That's fine.
So you're not quite there yet, we might be in another meeting or two, and we would have a discussion then in the, in the work session of that, and then take into consideration these other issues about the whole look of the place, which is really what you're, we'll be talking about, I think.
The whole look of the.
Well, the, the capital investments that I think you'll come back to us with are going to assist the look of the barns.
I think it would be helpful to show you all the history of what we've invested in that property.
Yeah.
You know, John, you and I talked about potential, and I, Jeff, just got that in my, she clearly knows more than I do. The link to the Hawkinsville, Georgia facility, and maybe, maybe harness racing really is our lane. You know, maybe, I, I don't, I don't know the horse field, I don't know what all the different lanes are, but maybe our lane is just harness racing. You know, maybe that's our market. You know, I, what, who, who are the horse people in Florida that come up? I mean, who, who, who are the horse people that come here? Is it other than harness racers?
Well, the problem we face is that we only get the benefit of the horse racing industry for a part of the year.
Okay, well, then that, I think you just answered my question.
So we have entertained other opportunities to bring horse events and other non-horse events into the facility to try to.
Augment that?
Reach revenue.
To augment the, the harness racing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because when I was out there last weekend, they had something going on in the infield, and they had different, I don't, I can't even describe it, but there were lanes where the horses were going up and down different.
I think that's equestrian training.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but.
So that, but that's not harness racing?
Right.
No, not at all. I mean, first, we have the harness track and the buildings that are oriented towards the harness industry. But they're only here for a certain period of time, because we're only in the training business, we're not in actually running the races. They go north for that. But then there's a whole other piece with the equestrian events that we host, and that's a different slice of the equestrian community. Now, then there are other things we might wish to be doing with the track facilities.
Offseason boarding, we've done the dressage shows. We've done the dressage shows. We've done the polo cross down there. None of that keeps the facility fully occupied. And there are challenges with all of it. The horse show side of the dressage, I mean, that's a, there's a very, very much locked-in regional or national schedule that you're competing for time with. And there's only so much of that market we're gonna capture, as an example.
Yeah. You know, maybe one of the good news pieces here is, though, is that since we only have the harness facility occupied for, say, what, October, November till May, as we talked the other day, it does allow us time to go in and refurbish barns and do things you couldn't do or have to do in a very careful way if the horses are still there. So, we have the opportunity to try to improve the facilities, do the best we can in marketing it to the harness industry, but then to find other uses for the property potentially.
Yeah.
Will Mark be on our agenda next week, or next meeting? He was gonna do some research and run the...
Maybe, I don't know. I mean...
Sometime in the next couple of meetings.
When it's ripe, we'll bring it to you.
Yeah, okay, but it's relatively soon, that's my point, okay.
Okay. That takes care of future items, and I'm not gonna, I don't see any other questions. So, is there a motion to recess the work session and enter a closed session?
Well, one, on the work session agenda, I did provide a revised text amendment to the PDO. Do you wanna discuss that in the closed session, or do you wanna discuss it? The only thing I wanna say about it is that...
Speak now, because, yeah, that's related to this.
I got some suggestions from a couple of residents. And so, there's some minor edits to what I provided last time. But the same premise of restricting and phasing out short-term rentals in single-family residential zone districts is still the purpose in the preamble in the applicability section. And whenever we're gonna vote on all this, that's the version I now have. I welcome other comments from council members and/or citizens.
I'm sorry, Pat, I didn't mean to overlook that, but it's there.
I only remembered it 'cause it was there.
No, I think we should be looking at that. But the next step is to get the code and the PDO, and we'll deal then with the decision where we wanna take the overall policy of the village. And your document will be very helpful to that. Okay, so, with that then, is there any other business for the work session? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn the work session and move to a closed session?
I moved to adjourn the work session. I moved to adjourn the work session. I moved to recess the regular meeting.
Sorry, we're in the work session, green page, number five.
Yeah, that's what I was reading. It said, "I moved to adjourn the work session. I moved to recess the regular," must be, the work session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-31811A6 "to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, and conditions of appointment of an individual public employee. Specifically, council will discuss Village Chef Samborn's contract renewal."
There's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Patrick Cazola. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move into a closed session in a few minutes, once the technology...